Last Mr. Showalter to lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Careful the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call the roll and then we'll be fully convened.
Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Mrs. Butcher-Cromway?
Here.
Mrs. Singer-Erdley?
Here.
Mr. Lesby?
Here.
Mrs. Tingle-Sane?
Here.
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
And Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. The first item on our agenda tonight, typically we go right into the body of the council agenda, but tonight at the first of our meeting is a public hearing over the property tax rate that's going to be set for Georgetown. The property tax rate that has been recommended to the council is 6.3 cents per hundred dollars of evaluation on your real property. Our current rate today is 6.5 cents per hundred dollars of evaluation. Our recommendation is to lower that to 6.3 cents per hundred dollars of evaluation. The reason that this public hearing is required is that the true compensating rate, based on the state's calculation, the rate could be as low as 6.2 cents per hundred dollars of evaluation. Our recommendation to the council is that we set the rate at 6.3 cents per hundred, and that requires us to hold a public hearing that has been advertised in the local paper, and we will now open that public hearing and be glad to take any public comment concerning our intention to set the real property tax rate at 6.3 cents per hundred dollars. So if there's anyone that would like to speak to this issue, to the council, they will be asked to take action later in the meeting to set that property tax rate. So if there is, does anyone please come to the podium? If there's not, and that is typically...
Richard King. Been in Georgetown about a year, and so, you know Georgetown's the second fastest growing city in Kentucky, and just wanting to know how those funds and stuff will be used. Obviously, real estate is at its premium in Georgetown nowadays, and so is the rental market and stuff, and so will that be used for street improvements? How will those funds be used? Coming from a similar situation to Mexico with the grocery receipts tax where state legislature gave every community the, from one-eighth to a three-eighths to raise their grocery receipts tax. Our city council at that point, instead of using the lower one, they were basing it on projections that were not very accurate. They decided to go with the whole three-eighths, and so in light of the real estate and the price of food and everything, it cost a hardship on several families in the community that it lived in. So, just a question for the council.
Sure, and I'd be happy to give you a fairly specific answer. The city of Georgetown has only three sources of revenue. They are an insurance premium tax, an occupational tax, and the ad valorem taxes for the property taxes. Property taxes make up about a little over 6% of our total revenues. The majority of our revenues are through the occupational tax, and then secondly would probably be through the insurance premium tax, and those funds go into our general fund where we do budget for public safety and all the various needs of the city. These funds are not specifically dedicated to a purpose. They go into our general fund and constitute somewhere between 6 and 7% of our total receipts. Any other questions or comment from the audience? Thank you. If not, then we'll close that public hearing, and we now have that hearing on the record, and we can move forward with the balance of our agenda. Each of the council members should have a copy of the minutes of our last regularly scheduled meeting, September the 10th, if you'd like to take a moment to look those over for any possible corrections or additions.
Motion made.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Each council member should have received a copy of our latest check register, if you could indicate that you've received that. Thank you. And then we are to the portion of the agenda for public comments. I'm gonna guess we'll have significant conversation about stormwater this evening. We have, we have had property damage, we have had real estate damage. I have seen, I've heard from council members who have flooded basements and flooded properties. We've even had loss of life here in Scott County from these rains and high water. We also know that over the next two and a half days, we have forecast as much as five additional inches of rain in groundwater that is already saturated. So, first on the public comment is Mr. Frank Mason.
Thank you, sir. I just have three issues that I would like to briefly comment on. First issue is curbs at the 138 South Hamilton on Constitution Avenue. Couple meetings ago, the mayor advised me that he would seek the city's engineers' findings and advice concerning the curb. I met with the engineer prior to last council meeting. He noted that the city had placed additional layers of asphalt on the, on the Constitution, raising the street level at above or near the height of the curb height, which allowed the water to continue to flow off of the street onto the property. He also noted that the city doesn't do that anymore because that's not the best way to resurface the streets. So the question I have is, and has the city made a plan to raise that curb or build a curb along there where it does not exist? Is there any plan in motion?
We, at an internal staff meeting today, Frank, we reviewed this curb request. Mr. Hightower is of the opinion that improving the curb on Hamilton and improving the curb on Constitution may help this situation, and he is recommending that we go forward with that. That is not something that will require council approval. We have the unit price bids on concrete work from Hamilton and Henkel, and it's something we can do administratively. So, Eddie has recommended that be done, and we are willing to try this experiment.
Okay, thank you. My second issue has to do with storm drains, and we noted in this last storm, couple days ago, and we have on film, that water backed out of the storm drains into our parking lot, which ended up surrounding our building at a height of five or six inches around the building and got into all the floors inside the building. And I know everybody had a lot of problems with all this rain last week, but the fact that it's coming out of the city drain lines into our parking lot damaging our property is a problem. And the city engineer told me that the, the city had hired a firm to scope the lines to see if things were stopped up and what was causing some of the problems. So I would like to ask if that project is underway and something has happened on that?
The project is underway, Frank. In fact, we're trying to do as much as 20% of all of these pipes every year. It's a pretty vast network, and we are working on that.
Okay, and does that mean that in that lower part of the city, that that's part of that project that is ongoing now?
I don't know specifically the details around your particular building, but yes, that is an ongoing effort.
Okay. And then the last thing is that in the rain yesterday, which wasn't too bad, or was it, I guess it was today, it was not too bad, I stood at the corner of Constitution and South Hamilton, and there is a storm drain, curb drain, on the north side of Constitution. And I noted that a lot of the water, if not most of the water, that was coming down north Hamilton, as it approached the drain, was being diverted away from the drain because of trash sitting on the drain. I went over and after some effort cleaned all that trash off, and then about 90% of the water that was coming down did go down in the drain rather than running on down to the highway, down the road. So I was just, I wanted to make the suggestion that the city service trucks that go around town and pick up trash, that as part of their, their job is that they, they check the, those drains on the curbs as they pass them, and if they need to be cleaned off, they could go ahead and clean them off and prevent that problem.
Appreciate your suggestion. I can tell you that Public Works was busy all day today cleaning out storm drains and inlets from every section of Georgetown. And we're happy to try this curbing project, given that you are significantly downhill from all the Farmers Bank parking lot, Hamilton Street, the Napa store, and I don't know if we fixed your problem, but we're willing to take this down.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Second on the list, someone from A&amp;Z Towing and Recovery. Yes, sir. Please come forward.
Thank you for saying, I represent A&amp;Z Towing and Philip Adams and Mr. Zeising. It's come to our attention recently that out-of-town companies have been put on the heavy wrecker rotator list in Scott County. Carries out of Frankfurt and Roberts, again, out of Lexington. They don't have businesses in this county, and we were just concerned about that because that's a good part of our revenue, is the heavy wreckers. I mean, God forbid anybody gets hurt, and truck wrecks happen, but we're here for that. There's a lot of other concerns we have with that. You know, we've attempted to contact Frankfurt ourselves to get on the list because we have extra records. We have to spend $200,000, $300,000 in their county just to be on their list. These companies don't have those type of facilities here. We've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars over 45 years to be where we are right now, and that concerns us. So, that's kind of a question I have. We've never done this before, so I look afraid. I'm sorry, I've been out in the mud and the rain all day working, so.
All right.
Working.
It's, sometimes I'm in a better position to answer the questions if I have some clue the question's coming. I have no idea what you're talking about. The police department and our dispatch operation handle the rotation. Council's set very clear guidelines, so absent my talking with the police and the dispatch, I'm sorry, I can't answer your question.
I appreciate that. I just wanted to bring the concerns up, so maybe we can address it again soon.
Be happy to discuss that with police leadership, and we have our police committee here. Mr. Showalter and Ms. Erdley are on the police committee. Those are things that we discuss on your behalf and would be happy to address it with the police department.
Been in the county for 45 years, doing well for you guys, so, and I'm proud to work for them as well.
I was just gonna suggest that maybe he call your office or call Andrew just to see what he needs to do to get on the, their agenda.
Sure.
You know, the small wreckers and stuff, I mean, everybody works hard for the other small companies. The other ones in Scott County don't have heavy wreckers. We're not really concerned with them. Just we're really concerned about that because that's a big part of our revenue. We don't want to lose that. Just two wrecks, I mean, it, it costs us $150,000 a year just to insure those big trucks. Two wrecks can take all that from us. It's a pretty serious concern.
Are you all in Georgetown or Scott County? I mean, I know you're in the county. Are you in Georgetown as well?
Well, we're A&amp;Z Towing, Mike's, Mike's Towing and AKA RPM Leasing. It's all the same company. Before they started in Stateville years ago, and they migrated to Georgetown.
Okay.
Off of Delaplane.
Delaplane.
Yeah, off of Industry Road, across from Capeport. Been there 25 years, I think. The owner of the company's right there, Mr. Adams. I think a lot of you probably know Mr. Adams, so.
Oh, yeah. I'd be, be happy to learn more about this situation and be in a better position to answer your question.
I figured this would be a starting point.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And if, if you'll contact my office tomorrow, just 863-9800, we'll be glad to get something set up.
Well, Mr. Swannigan spoke with us before. I think he has something to do with it on the police.
Oh, yes, sir. He'll be a part of this conversation.
Okay, good. 863-9800.
Yes, sir. Just extension nine, you'll get Arlene, and she'll make it work.
Yep.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir. Thank you for coming forth, council. Let's see, next on the sign-in sheet is Mr. Bob Witt.
I'm a rookie, too.
But Connie made you do it.
She did. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. The problem I am concerned with, first of all, I am the president of McClellan View, is a safety issue. And the safety issue is the, the dog leash control. We've got residents in our community that are walking their big dogs without a leash. They say that they are controlled by voice command and things of this nature. The other day I saw one of these people walking about 30 yards ahead of their dog, and their dog was sitting down behind them. They never did look to see about it. We have coyotes out in that, our farm's right behind us, and sometimes people can, don't know where it's a coyote or a dog or what it is. So, I think we need to, is an amendment be made to, to make it mandatory that they have a leash with their dog, and I would love to see him to be able to pick up their messes. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Witt. If you'd like to stick around for part of the meeting, we, we do have an ordinance to be presented to the council that Ms. Tackett is sponsoring to take care of this issue.
Right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'll be here.
Thank you. Next we have, I'll mess up this pronunciation, Ann, Lee, and, and Leader.
Ladies and gentlemen, Lee is, you and I are next door neighbors, and we often talk across our little culvert there, which is a charming limestone, you know, 100-year-old little ditch, which we're very fond of. Unfortunately, it is ground zero for all the stormwater that comes from that part of town. I understand there are three branches that feed into the storm drains that come out right between our houses. This drain was built, she has an easement, you know, to put her water in there, and I understand, according to sort of natural law or whatever, that, you know, rainwater gets to go in there, too, but we are getting everybody's water. Water comes down from Indian Acres on Highland Avenue, does not go into the drains, there's only one drain, and it goes on the sidewalk and comes across my front yard. I've lost that much soil right by the sidewalk as it comes across my property. It's pushing the culvert wall in. Same thing is happening on Lee's side. Her husband has tried to put holes in and try to support the culvert. It's also on the property of two other houses before it goes underground at Rockford. When you all cleaned out the drains three years ago, they cleaned them out right to our culvert, but did not clean out the culvert. Then they went ahead and cleaned out underneath Rucker, which actually gave us more water because there was more water coming through. Also, the other problem is when the pond across the street, the retention pond at Garth, its maximum height level is several, at least probably 12 inches, if not more, above the culvert, which means as long as that retention pond has this much water in it, we are underwater until that, till drains through down to the, to the spring, to the creek. And this might sound like a small thing, except it is a, an issue for the entire city. Our culvert caves in. That water literally has no place to go until, I don't even know where, at the park, at Royal Spring. There's no place for it to go underground. And so we have several problems. One is the long-term stormwater issue for this city. You know, all this building is going on. I have no idea where all that rainwater's coming. Where is it going to go? The other issue is right now that culvert is extremely fragile, and we have no way to fix it. My backyard, every time, I, I had, I've had five or six incidents of flooding since July. I went to Cynthia for an hour and a half. We had a fast way, and I came home and my backyard literally was a pond. I wanted to put it on eBay as a waterfront property, beautiful waterfront property in Georgetown. It happens all the time. Fortunately, Mr. Hightower came out with, is it, I'm sorry, Mr. Bradley from Public Works? Who's that in charge of Public Works?
Robert Bruin.
Bruin, I'm sorry. I was in the V's, but not, not down far enough. They came out and they had some folks from Scott County Jail come and clean it out to a degree, which helped. In fact, it stopped what would have been floods, at least two other rains. However, even when you all saw the flooding the other day, that's what we get every time there's a hard rain. That's what we experience every time, not just when there's an enormous storming. So, we really need some help with this, and we need it now. I, we cannot, my basement floods up to 18 inches. Our backyard, your basement floods. It's eroding everything. My, this is the first year my garden looks pathetic because of the constantly washing away the topsoil and the silt. I can't, it's no point in my putting mulch back in there anymore and trying to grow anything. Everything is like, the soil is like dead because it's just completely washing out all the topsoil. And so, it's very, very discouraging, I can tell you, and I really don't know what to do. When I moved here 13 years ago, the first flood was about eight months after I moved in. Everything I had brought with me that was put in the basement was completely destroyed. We were told it was the driest basement on Broadway. So we put a concrete floor in, but okay. My sister-in-law and I moved together. We combined two households. We have a lot of things. My, my son lost all of his, all of his history, all of his photographs and scrapbooks and dissertation. Everything was in the basement, all of my art books. We were told at the time that it was a 100-year flood, and the city would do nothing about it to compensate us in any way because it wasn't their fault. It was just a 100-year flood. Well, I must be like about five or six hundred years old by now with all the floods if we go by four years. So that is a problem. Four hot water heaters, and I tried to get in the shower to come here today because I didn't want to offend anybody, and took a cold shower because a hot water heater's on. So, I know that Lee's had a lot of destruction in her property, and not just us, all along Eli Alley. It's just, you know, the Hamilton properties on the corner there. It's just very, very discouraging because this is a major, major issue.
A lot of people's affected, you know. It's not just us.
It isn't.
It's a lot, a lot of people. People passing by Broadway and living on, on that area.
Yeah, it is, and it's not just our culvert, it's your culvert. It's the city's culvert because it handles all of that water. So, I, I know there are two steps. There's one the major overhaul of the stormwater system, and I'm glad I'm not a politician right now. I don't envy you all having to deal with this, but with the way the city's growing, I, I just, I am like in shock. And then there's the short term to keep this thing from creeping in until y'all can find another solution. So we're begging you for some kind of relief at this point.
I think it needs more funding to rebuild that stormwater, at least, to get better drain and clean, have a professional equipment digging and clean all the soil and fix the street on the Broadway. There's a bigger hole.
Yeah, oh, yeah, there's that.
They're washing all the...
Yeah, it's washing all the soil underneath the, the planting strip, or what do you call that? The parking strip? It's, it's completely washed out under there. Yeah, and so, and there's, I don't think it's ever been dredged particularly. I mean, they've come and taken out the brick, some lumber and all those things, but there's just silt and gravel and I just don't even know what to do. I, you know, we explored filling in the backyard because now there's this big dip, this big pond back there when it rains, but then we didn't know what pressure that would put on the, on the wall. We talked to the, I said the engineer at that point. He said, you know, you start building up and you don't know what kind of pressure you're going to exert on the wall, and that could make it worse. So we didn't want to pass the problem on to other people because that's what it could do.
How long has Ms. Lee been your neighbor?
Oh, 12 years.
12 years.
12 and 13 years then?
I mean, then, you know what?
It's just getting worse and worse every year.
Yeah. How long ago did we do the Bradshaw stormwater project?
Well, when we bought the property...
Nobody told us there's a flood issue.
Oh, no. We were told. The Bradshaw property is going to be, we used to have water here, but the Bradshaw property has solved it.
Yeah.
That's what I was told.
So you bought after the Bradshaw project took place?
Yes, as it was being finished. And that first flood was quite the shock. The second one was an even bigger shock.
Because the city and the county together have invested millions of dollars in that area, I guess, prior to your arrival, unfortunately, on Broadway with two different projects I can think of, and the county participated with us significantly on one of those.
Well, and there's no way to hold the water back at Bradshaw anyway. I mean, there's no way, and I know that there are several ways water gets in there, but there's no way that you can, as far as I understand, there are no dikes or anything to keep the water from...
Well, it's designed to, to capture a certain amount of water, you know, to prevent...
It's not doing what it's supposed to do.
Well, it does. I mean, we've had it, we've had it...
But we have flood. We flood...
Well, it can only do so much. It's, it's not the end-all...
Is this thing to the current standard? Are we living in a situation like we in the current standard?
And we, we were deceived when we bought the house. I'll tell you that much. We were grocery receipts.
Actually, I looked at that house, so.
Every time it rains.
I know. Yeah, I looked, I looked at it a lot.
Oh, that's lovely.
Well, no, no, I don't mean that in a negative way.
No, 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 I know.
But, but I mean, when I saw that there, that was cause for concern, and I loved the house, and...
Wow.
It's a beautiful house. I mean, it's amazing.
It was made, built and signed by Mary Garth Hawkins.
Yeah, oh, I know. It's...
Who was licensed, who was an architect and a...
Oh, it's an amazing house, and I know you...
By Dr. Smith.
Yes, exactly. We put a lot of money into it.
You've done a lot, and I know it's frustrating when you're trying so hard to do it.
And now, the roofs are cracking, the ceilings are cracking. I mean, there's a terrible disruption to this property. And, I mean, I don't know what recourse we even have. And I really wasn't going to bring this up, but I quite have metastatic cancer. Okay, I shouldn't really talk back to that kind, but, you know, and I've survived nine years with this, but I will tell you to have to, to, to go to sleep at night in here at rain and go, oh my God, I mean, I have so many nights I've stayed up to monitor my sister-in-law. I've been on watch and trying to do this. Our basement is flooded.
It's added stress to already...
It's anxiety. We just have anxiety getting crazy, you know. Every time it rains in the middle of night, we just have to check.
You probably do, because you're just like...
If everything is okay.
But it's very disappointing to hear, and that's what the police department, or the fire department said, oh, yeah, everybody knows this flood, so I don't know how it is that, I don't know.
I mean, if the city doesn't do anything to keep this up to the standard, then the Public Works will be busy every time it rains all over the city.
Yeah. So, we know this is a big deal. This is not a small thing, and it's not just...
We needed to have an initiation, a step, or whatever, to start it. We need funding or whatever, have a plan for that. I think this is time to initiate that.
Yeah, I mean, especially with the city growing as much as it is.
Ann and I have, Ms. Leader and I have had a chance to meet in my office for a fairly lengthy conversation, and we were able to talk Sunday.
Sorry. Your number's in the phone book. I just, may I just interrupt you for a moment, Mayor? Because 911 called, several of them, and no one was coming to close off the street. And in desperation, I looked at my old phone book and I found the mayor's phone number. I said, you know, he's gotta know. This is terrible. There's public safety issues. I called them.
We're just trying to get, bring this up here so get more awareness for the government, and we need to do something, take some action.
So I apologize for disturbing you, something.
It's harder for her to come here and for me to, so, but we have to.
Yes, ma'am. We, we talked quite a bit Sunday, and we are, I think, all of the council is aware of this issue, and we all are aware of the solution. of this issue, and we all are aware of the solution. It is a significant stormwater infrastructure improvement that we have been unable to allocate the $10 billion that this fix is going to cost. What I explained to Ms. Leader on Sunday is the city is making efforts on stormwater problems. We are currently, in each of the last several budgets, we have spent between $800,000 and $900,000 on stormwater fixes. But in every case, those have been small-scale Band-Aids on a problem that is very large in scope. To your first request, ladies, I think that we should take a look at the concrete culvert, the ditch that you're reporting in fragile condition, and look at what steps need to be taken to strengthen that, to make sure that doesn't collapse. I think that was your first request, and that's certainly something we can do. The, until we are willing to initiate a large-scale stormwater infrastructure project, this is going to continue to flood.
It is.
Yeah.
These are the physical realities. These are the found conditions that exist there, and they're tough. They're real tough. And I think this council will face some funding decisions of a very large magnitude very quickly because these problems are going to continue to grow. The stormwater comes, this, this is the lowest place in Georgetown. It has to get to the Royal Spring. It has to get down by the Water Company, exactly where our most aged infrastructure is, that was built over 100 years ago for a city of 3,000 to 5,000 people, when it functioned at perfect design capacity, which it doesn't today.
Exactly.
Now, we're working on cameras, we're looking on cleaning grates, we're looking at trying to make things at least work as well as they can, even though they're substandard, until, we've had the studies done, we know what the solution is.
Well, it's not just us that's having the infrastructure issues. In Louisville, they had, their sewers collapsed in downtown because I was there last week, and it reeked in so many, you know, and that's just something that, you know, you have to address over time. It's not going to get any better, and unfortunately, it's, you know, something's got to be done.
I want to follow, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to follow up on this.
Yes, ma'am.
Because it's real bad, it just, just, I don't want to be a mad person. I want to know, this, this is, you guys are working on this, we have a plan, we have a hope on this, and in the time that I know.
Yes. Like, I might not be alive long enough to see the end of this, but, which is okay, it's not.
I'd like to get involved. I want to know how the city's spending.
Lee has more hours.
The money, how the city's spending the budget on the, maintain the stormwater system, oil system, whatever.
And today, all of our stormwater repairs and improvements are being done out of our general fund, the large-budget pool that the city operates from. And we are spending almost a million dollars a year on storm.
At least haven't spent any for us. Oh, they had some, I mean, they need, we need more. I'm sorry.
I know. It's just very hard on us. It's, we've been through so much.
It is.
Yes, ma'am. And, and I, I want you all to know that, that I believe that every council member, and, and our clerk and myself, understand how difficult it is.
And again, Mayor, the main problem is, this is where the city water comes. It's not just, you know, just us. It is where all of your water goes on that side of town. It's not, you know, it's not just a little thing. It's not just a couple of properties that are affected, you know.
You're down in the swag where everything comes.
Yeah.
Across Garth Elementary.
Yeah, it all drops.
And unfortunately, they rebuilt everything up to the culvert. You get in my culvert, look, already, there's the new pipe, but then it stops right at the oldest part, as we're saying.
Because they claim that they will build on private property, but my question is that why the city built the, the culvert 100 years ago to use for service public, to drain water? Why they cannot maintain it to the current standard, to continue service public? Why it's a problem?
Yeah.
Why it's not on private, it's serviced the whole area?
Yeah, what she, what she's talking about is on several occasions, when I have come before this body in the past, is that, well, it's your property.
We don't have the resource to fix it, and I already repaired a lot.
She, she has an easement to put her storm, her roof runoff into the culvert. That's part of the deed. But, and that's the problem, and it's like frustrating because there is, there's a natural easement for regular water, but what's happened is that the city has used it for other properties other than what it was originally designed for. And I think we've often gotten the answer that, well, that's not our problem, but when they came to clean the pipes, they stopped at the culvert. They would not clean the culvert, so that's part of the issue, and I know you understand.
Yes, ma'am, and I, I don't, I have not talked to one council member who has said, this is your all's problem, don't bother us.
Thank you all.
It's our problem.
I do not, I do not believe that, that attitude exists around.
It doesn't. I want to say, now I am going to say thank you because that is the answer I've gotten in the past. I know that Ms. Hawkins researched things for us quite some time, and that was the answer.
This solution is bigger than your property.
Oh, yeah. It's citywide anymore.
It is.
Thank you.
You are bearing the brunt. Others of your neighbors are also feeling the brunt, and, and there are other parts of town that suffer.
Well, Mr. Hamilton right here, which is talking.
More people will be affected, or will come here, and they will go be real busy and have discussions.
I do think, as painful as this is for you, and difficult as this is for you, it is helpful for us to hear from you. It, it, it helps the council to hear from you. It helps me to hear from you.
It might make this council make a decision that we are regretting to make sometimes.
Yeah.
Well, we, a day of reckoning is coming for these large-scale problems. But we, we do want you to know that this council is, is very empathetic for your circumstances, and that we do, you've heard them say, we share the problem with you, and the solution has to come from, from a grander solution that we introduce.
And I will say, I mean, I've, I've had two basement floods in eight years, and I can't imagine what you've gone through because yesterday we had three feet of water in our basement, lost the washer, dryer, maybe HVAC, dehumidifier, and I've just had two instances, so I can't imagine what you've gone through.
We moved our washer and dryer, so we just couldn't do it anymore.
Yeah.
I'm afraid to look at the permits.
It helps us, though, to know, to hear this, to, you know, for you to come, and I know it's not easy to talk about, and appreciate you coming out to.
Just before I got here.
To share with us.
She can come to here.
Yeah. It's your property, it's your home. No escape.
And I understand that government moves slowly, and that's why.
It was huge. They did talk about phasing.
Just getting by, cleaning the basement.
Yeah.
My sister's apartment.
And it, and it's just ongoing, you know, when it rains, you know.
If I just get like, oh no, stop.
Exactly. I, I had to take a nap before I came here today.
Yeah.
And I was lying down and go, oh my God, it's raining hard. Well, there's nothing I can do if it floods, I just, but something happened. Did something happen with Public Works cleaning something out because we were this far from flooding today, and it didn't flood, and I was really surprised? So, maybe something got unstuck somewhere.
Well, I know Public Works has been coming in that area and cleaning that drain out.
Okay, so something happened.
Every time it rains, they come back and they'll clean that thing out. Public Works nonstop after it rains, I'm telling you, they, they work very hard.
And let's their hearts. Shout out to them because when I called Mayor Prather on a Sunday, he got the Public Works guys out there to close that road off, and someone was going to get hurt, and they kept going through it.
The good news, after Ms. Leader's call, my first call was Assistant Chief Swanigan, and what I learned from that call was they had been notified, they had already directed Public Works to do that.
Oh, thank you.
We were, everything was in motion. Everything had been set in motion, but I was able to relay that to you a little quicker. And we will, we will look at the fragile nature of this concrete ditch. I think it would also be helpful, the large engineering estimates that we, this council heard previously, was at a time before I became mayor. The Bradshaw Farm Improvements was at a time before I became mayor. It would probably be helpful as an update for the council, particularly some of the newer council members and myself, if we could have those evaluations updated and repriced. They, they probably gave us some phased solutions. David, you.
We talked about phasing, Mayor, we absolutely did.
Phasing, which could help with, with how these things are funded. But I think if, if the council's comfortable, I'm ready to refresh our understanding of what the engineering needs are in the oldest part of town. Yes, ma'am, Lou?
Are there grants for stormwater work? Did you know what?
I, I can't answer that. There, there don't seem to be grants for anything, but, but maybe. And if we could at least begin that part of the bigger process.
The only thing, it's going to rain for the next two days. I'm not sure what you can do about that, that culvert, but maybe look at that in these next two days. I'm not sure what you can do with it being so wet, but at least maybe try to get some idea.
Try and make sure it's cleaned out. We've got some really tough issues around county, town today from debris.
Yeah.
And, and it's hitting places where we didn't expect it. There was water running over the bridge in Cherry Blossom.
Well, there was a, I got a call about that, and there's a tree or something that's pushed underneath there, blocking that water.
There's something blocking the big culvert underneath the bridge, and we cannot let our people under there to clear it out because they'll risk getting trapped. We have to wait until the rain stops and the water level drops, or I can't put our people at risk.
Right.
So, and, and we've got those all over town today. Public Works was trying to hit as many as they could.
They did something, did something worked better. You can kind of, I can tell how the water flows across the road and stuff, when there's a problem or there's backwashing of ours, yeah, so something was going on. So, something, they did something, I don't know what it was, but it worked, at least to facilitate moving the water through today.
Yes, ma'am.
And we were very close to flooding, so.
So, I think we're, we're more than happy to, to work with you on, on that open culvert and trying to make sure it's cleaned out, and we're willing to revisit some of the engineering understandings that we have to try and seek a bigger solution.
Thank you. Maybe have them at our next council meeting? Would that be too soon, Mayor?
If they can give us some thoughtful information.
Yeah, exactly.
We, we already have a strand on board for stormwater, or is that a natural connection? Or, I don't know, we, we can talk about it.
I think they may actually have been a part of that original study five years ago.
Chase and I are talking about doing things with the Water Company, and we need big understandings to, to make big fixes.
We can't fix it today, but we will work on it.
We totally understand.
We will work on it.
Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
We really appreciate all of you having an understanding of what this is.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
They said it's wonderful. It's okay.
Next on the list for public comment is Harry Bergenhagen.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. This is simple. I love what you did with the water tower, painting it with the symbol on it. It's terrible. Looking at it, driving down on Frankford Road, it looks like a corner lot with no house on it, and it only says Kentucky. It used to say in huge letters Georgetown, and I'd like for it to say that again.
Symbol here on the.
It's a, it's pretty color or whatever.
It's actually this exact design.
It sure doesn't look like it from the road, from my insight, may not be that good.
Well, and we, we've actually, our Water Company has tried to improve it. Some of the colors weren't as distinct in providing the difference, and they went back and made some changes that made it look better. So.
You can leave the symbol the same, but put the big letters of Georgetown on there.
Increase the size.
I've come up Payne's Depot Road, a lot from 64 and so on. Used to, see that water tower? You could read miles and miles away, it said Georgetown on there. Put the name on there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, under public comment is Mr. Scotty Williams.
My name is Brad Weaver. This is Scotty, and we are the owners of the Tipsy Cow Bar out in the Outlet Center. What we're here for is to get an extension on the, the noise ordinance for September 29th and 30th. On the 29th, Georgetown College, some of Georgetown College has asked us to host a homecoming party. And then on the 30th, we're actually having an all-day benefit concert for Deputy Morales, and it will run till 11 or 12.
It will run from 1:00 P.M. till 12:00 midnight.
On a Sunday evening?
Yes.
Yes. So, that's, those are the two, two things that we're, we're having. Of course, we've, we've put in all the applications and stuff that we need for, to actually have this, but we need to get the city's approval to, we're going to have five bands on Sunday. That's going to be the Deputy Morales benefit, so they will be playing up until 11 or 12 o'clock that night. So, we need, from what I understand, the ordinance is 9:00 right now.
9:00. On a work night, it is 9:00.
Yeah, we're, we're actually on the end where we've already talked to the, the theater, the billiards place. Of course, everybody's basically closed at a certain point, but we've talked to the, the beauty shop out there. We've basically talked to everybody, and of course, everybody wants to be part of the benefit, so they're okay with, with that. And then, like I said, the, the, the thing is for Georgetown part, Georgetown College homecoming. So, on both nights, we were trying to get it raised from 9 to 12.
Can I ask a question? On these two nights, are you going to have any extra security out there for?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Definitely.
On your own dime?
Yes. Oh, yes.
Alcoholic beverages, will those be served in the parking lot?
They will be. They're Kentucky Eagles bringing out what they call a draft trailer, and of course, we're blocking everything from the door to the parking lot. So, it will be, it will be an enclosed space, I guess. And we're going to have plenty of, plenty of extra security.
You're not near, because you're out, you're out on my end of town, you're not near any residential.
No.
Residential around there. The closest thing would be, you might bother the hotels, but.
Yeah, I have hotels.
The winner circle would, is pretty close, winner circle's probably the closest to you actually that somebody will be. Have you talked to them about it?
We haven't spoken to them. I didn't, I didn't know if that was considered a residential.
Yeah, they're pretty close to them.
They're pretty close by sound.
They'll be close enough to them.
I don't know, I mean, I don't know how the sound will carry.
Right.
Obviously, we've had-
You may carry out to the interstate and then-
Right, well, that's, that's prob, it's gonna be set up closer to the interstate, we're thinking, that's where the stage is gonna be set up, but we've had people to donate sound equipment. On, on, on Saturday night, all we're having is one person playing acoustic, so that probably will not be very loud at all. The, the night that will be the loudest probably will be Sunday all day, because there's gonna be five full bands, and all five of these bands have actually donated their cut two hours for the benefit. So that's gonna go, start at 1:00 and 11 or 12 o'clock. So everybody is obviously getting on board with the thing for Deputy Morales, so, I mean, everybody on our end of the, of the center out there, they're all on board. But like I said, we just wanted to get your awesome approval to, for the sound, for those two nights. Like I said, Saturday's gonna be acoustic, so it won't be, I doubt if anybody will even hear it.
Right.
To be honest.
There shouldn't be any louder than music coming from our building.
The acoustic, you know, one person, no drums, probably just an acoustic guitar. So it shouldn't be too loud at all.
The event Friday night for the college, Saturday.
Saturday.
The Saturday event for the college, we still haven't gotten the right sign-offs from anyone at the college, and I'm very skeptical of that one happening.
We're still awaiting that.
We called them today, and we just, I mean, they approached us. Obviously, we took the proper steps that we needed to, to fill out the applications for your local ABC and the state. And we wasn't aware that some, you know, someone from the college needed to sign off. So basically, we called them today and just told them, we can't do it if you can't get us a letter from your dean. So-
Absent a letter from the dean, absent a letter to me from the dean with them taking full responsibility, we're not gonna authorize that Saturday thing. We've had off-campus fraternity parties at other locations, and they have been the most destructive, the most destructive events, and Robert, we've had full-scale brawls at off-campus fraternity parties, and we're gonna be very careful about that. And unless the college is 100% on board with this party, it won't happen.
I, I will say this, I have heard this after speaking to the guys from the fraternity and sorority. I have heard that they've had some great wild parties. So obviously, when we agreed to do this, we had no idea what they had been capable of in the past, you know?
Yeah, we're not gonna put officers in that position to be hurt.
I understand that, I understand that.
Now, Sunday is a little different story.
Sunday's a different story, that's gonna be a council decision.
I have another question.
What I can tell you about, there will be complaints about the music. I guarantee you there'll be complaints about the music, and absent some action by this council, the police will come and shut you down. They've done it to me at parties that I was a host of, at venues in Georgetown. I know about this ordinance because they've come shut my events down, so I, I'm with you.
We understand, hope.
So I, we, we, we do support these fundraisers, and, and we want to be engaged with it. But council needs to be aware that you're gonna hear about this if you play music, if you authorize music till midnight on Sunday.
Yeah, does it have to go quite till Sunday? Can it not cut off at 11 or 10?
Well, I thought that it was till 11.
I will tell you this, our, our last band is scheduled till 11. The reason we're reaching for midnight is because when you're putting, I deal with the music, so it's kinda, you know, you have 30 minutes in between to set a band up.
Right.
Get their music correctly and dial it in on, on, on the system. I was just allowing that hour for a, a few over just throughout the day, just in case it went a little over, but we are scheduled until 11:00 p.m.
I mean, it'd be more, a little bit more comfortable to say 11 instead of midnight on, since it's a workday, the next, the next day. One of the subdivisions you may bother, might be the one that I'm in, but-
Well, you, you can, you can call us, we'll, we're too loud, we'll turn it down.
Well, I will say this, Mr. Morales's family lives in our subdivision, so we're all, whoops, whoops. We're all supporting whatever we need for Mr. Morales to help kill him, thank you very much for that. So-
In the nature of music, I'm sure y'all been to concerts, the closer is usually the best one, and this is the case also for that night, it'll be the best group, it'll draw the largest crowd and biggest donation, that's the only reason I allow for that hour. Would like to allow for that 11 to 12, it'll probably be over between 11 and 12, 12 o'clock.
Yes, ma'am.
With that said, do you think, would it hurt any of the bands' feelings if each one of the bands were given a little bit less time to be able to wrap it up by 11? I'm not talking about eliminating a band, but each, instead of them playing X number of minutes, could that be reduced down to where everybody gets to play, but it, it maybe doesn't go till?
Because you know, I was just kinda wondering, just kinda thinking as we were all processing this, the neighborhood across, behind the graphic, what's, you know?
Oh, Morgan.
If it would filter over there, 'cause-
I've got that loud, I've got that loud music going.
Yeah. I, but I, just places I've lived in the past, like it was like blocks and blocks and blocks away, but you could just still hear, so I just-
I wanna, I wanna just, I wanna say one thing real quick.
I understand.
We have, we have, I know we're a bar, and, but when all this happened with Deputy Morales, it hit home because I was a police officer for 12 years. His uncle was retired from Lexington Metro, and his father was actually shot in the line of duty in Harrodsburg years ago. So when all this happened, it, it hit, I mean, he called me and he was like, we need to do something for the deputy, and I said, I already thought about that. So, you know, it hits home for us because we've been in that, you know, I've went out for 12 years not knowing if I was gonna come home at night or not, and he almost lost his father being shot in the line of duty. So, you know, we've raised a couple thousand dollars already, which, you know, I know that may not be 20,000, but we've given, you know, a couple thousand dollars already, and we, we just want to do something to try to help. I mean, whatever it is, so, you know, like I said, I realize we're a bar, and, and maybe not everybody's crazy about a bar, but like I said, this comes from me and him more personally than it does the bar, because we've been in this situation before. So, you know, with that being said, I mean, we, we thought about starting it at 12, but, you know, church, we want everybody to get out of church and get to where they're having lunch.
Yeah, church comes to the bar, yeah.
We understand, we understand. You're from a good place.
On the fundraiser event, so there, there are two questions, I think. One is the ending time, which will be a council decision, and the other, Andrew, is just a legal question, serving alcohol in the parking lot is, that's a key part of this.
There is.
Did, did you get comfortable with that idea today? Because we, we've talked about this today, we wanted to anticipate this and have the best questions we could for you. So we've tried to do a little research with the ABC clerk and the city attorney on what we can and can't do, even though our heart wants us to do whatever we can.
Well, and I wanna say right off the bat that it, you know, whether, whether or not there's alcohol served doesn't necessarily affect the hours, but it certainly affects whether our, our concerns from a public safety standpoint. But the reason I asked you the question is whether there's gonna be alcohol served is, I wanted to know whether it was gonna be, who was gonna serve it, and you said that Kentucky Eagle was coming.
No, they're, they're bringing us actually a draft trailer.
Okay, so you would be, you would be serving it, so the next question-
It will be our, it will actually be our star-certified bartenders, which, if you're all not familiar with that, they have to go through a certification of, most importantly, to tell when somebody is being over served, so.
Like, one of our folks has had star-certified, where we've had events downtown here.
Sure.
So we've done star certifications.
Sure.
So our, you know, the, the state law talks about it in terms of being able to serve alcohol on your premises, and then Tracy showed me your lease, I think it was your lease earlier, and it's not 100% apparent that the parking lot is your property.
But the way the landlord put it to us today, that it's, it is our premises upon approval by them, as long as we have the approval by them, then it is our premises, that section of the parking lot. So he has the right to deny it to be our premises at the time, like, I guess we're here, and he's kind of the committee, he says, what are you doing, and we tell him what we're doing, and, well, sure, you can do that, and then it becomes our premises.
And actually, the, the movie theater owns their part of the parking lot.
Sure.
And they're on board with-
They're actually one of the sponsors of the event.
Yeah, with Sunday's event, so.
What we'll likely do is, we will get with the state ABC to make sure that they feel the same way that we do about your license, your authority to serve alcoholic beverages in the parking lot, whether or not that is, constitutes part of your premises. I think it's a, I think it's a tough question. I mean, but if there's an argument for it, we'll, we'll look at it. It's a really short timeframe between now and then, but we'll commit to get an answer.
Well, and, and-
Well, we can, if the mood of the, it's a sense of the council is to approve everything you want to do.
Sure.
Then we package it, Tracy packs it all up, and the final decision is the state ABC.
Sure.
We just need to get through this hurdle, so that hurdle can be approached.
We, we, we understand all of your concerns. We, we could realistically take all the tables out of our building and have it inside of our building, but we just thought that if we did it outside, it would be something last part of the, you know, before we go into fall, maybe it'd bring more people in, more donations, if we had a bigger event.
I think you're right.
So that's why we just decided to do it in the parking lot, and that's why we're here today trying to get this, because, you know, we, we just assumed that it would bring more people in. So, you know, like I said, we could do it in our building, take all the tables out, but we wanna try to get as many people to come as we possibly can. It, it don't matter if they come and stay five minutes, but, you know, as long as they make a donation when they come, that's our main, that's our main goal, so.
I have another question, if you don't mind.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Because I'm not really for sure about this, and I'm sure you probably have some kinda safety measures set up when you do serve drinks and people drink too much or whatever, do you have something set up that you, you're watching that, and you take keys, or?
Obviously, with me and him, we're running all night, so that's part of the bartenders and the servers to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Okay.
Now, I will say this, we have pretty, pretty strict bartenders, to be honest with you. I mean, they, they watch theirselves pretty good, I mean, but if someone gets to that point, we, I mean, obviously, you know, me being a, a police officer for so long, you know, the first thing you wanna do is, is tackle them and take their keys away from them or something, just don't get in a car and drive.
Right.
Obviously, I can't do that, but normally, what we do is, if someone is at that point, we have Lyft, we have a guy that's, that works for Lyft and Uber, and we also have the taxi service.
Okay.
That we have cars, that we call for them.
As, in the worst-case scenario is, we have a gentleman on our security staff that, that he's director of maintenance at the Hilton Garden Inn, we get him a room if we have to.
Okay.
I mean, we, it's all paid by us. I mean, if somebody will accept a cab ride, or a Lyft ride, or Uber, we pay, we will pay for it.
Okay.
I, I mean, I don't care where you're going, we'll pay for whatever it is, so long, you know, as long as you get home safe, but obviously, we can't stop everybody, and that's with any bar.
Right, I understand that.
And on a typical Saturday night, just to, to kind of put it in perspective, we have about 3,500 square feet of actual drinking, eating space, whatever you wanna call it, and on a Friday or Saturday night, there's five of us, have three security staff, and plus him and myself are there until 2:00 a.m., patrolling that, just so it, I mean, it's gonna happen, you can't stop them all, but-
I know.
We, we try to secure that, you know, if you drink too much, you're cut off.
I just had to ask that question.
No, that's, that's-
Because all they're really asking is for permission for that one day to extend from 9 to 12 for the benefit for Deputy Morales, right? And I'm okay with going forward with that, as long as you get all the ducks in the row with the state ABC and all of that, I can make a motion for that.
And I'll second it, and when my neighbors call, I'll say, I'll just go join the party.
Go make a donation.
Go make a donation.
Actually, my cell phone number is on our, our Facebook page, so just call me and say, hey, do you care to turn it down just a little?
Don't worry, they'll be notified, and they may be up there and say, crank it down just a little bit.
They're, they're, they're welcome to come out.
Other than if they're on duty, no.
No, not for that. We, we do serve Pepsi and water.
There you go.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's very admirable that you're all good in this, so.
I think it is, and people pitch it in however they can.
I do, I think it's, I think it's very commendable.
If we get, if we do get called, the mayor's office get called, I think when they tell them it's a one-time, it's who the benefit was for, why we were allowed to do that.
Well, I, I will say this, it was when he called me, the first thing we did was call the sheriff's department, because we was like, I mean, you know, we are a bar, I mean, hey, let's be realistic here, you know, I was a police officer, he's been, I mean, it's a bar, you know, some people for it, some people against it, but we wanted to do something, but we wanted to make sure that the sheriff's department was okay with taking money from a bar. So even though we're personally, you know, behind it because of what we've done, we just wanna make sure they were okay with it, so.
Very good.
Yeah, it is.
And like I said, we, we've raised a couple thousand dollars already for them, so.
I think we asked the right questions.
And I think the Morales family is, is very appreciative of what the community's doing for the kids.
Everybody, I mean, everybody in this community's coming together, and we see it, we see it a lot, so, I mean, it's just, I would hope that somebody would do that for me, had I been shot like he was.
Well, you reap what you sow.
Sure.
And you need a blue bow for your business, but I'll talk to you about that later.
Any what?
A blue bow.
We, we want some.
Come to Carriage House.
500, I think she said.
Down the street from you.
Down there on 460.
I'll be able to hear your music, so come on down.
Two doors down from Wendy's.
Okay.
Way to go, Karen.
What can I say?
I mean, we want something to put on our doors, we just didn't know where to get them, so.
Are there any other questions or comments for the council?
Yes, I do.
That the motion was until 12.
Yes.
With approval through the-
With approval, yeah.
With the appropriate approval.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Now, I don't know if we actually approved on your Saturday night, though, with the, but-
No, that's just for Deputy Morales.
For the Morales on your, with your college situation.
I'll be honest with you, I'm kinda like the mayor, I don't, we weren't, when they approached us about this-
We weren't aware of that.
We weren't aware of any of the, of the stuff.
You might be better off not doing that then, maybe.
Well, I'm gonna go on the recommendation of the mayor, I'm not making a motion for Saturday night, only Sunday for Deputy Morales.
I don't know if they will get approval from the dean, so.
I doubt it.
And if they don't, it don't hurt my feelings at all.
I'm really, I don't think they will.
If they don't, trust me, it don't hurt my feelings.
But he told me at 11:36 this morning that he was going to the dean's office.
It may be more trouble than we want, so.
Yeah.
I think it may start something that you really don't want long-term.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, exactly.
You're probably right.
Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you all so much.
Appreciate it.
Y'all have a good night.
You too.
Chief Ford.
Fire prevention.
October 20th is our annual fire prevention parade and safety day, so we can come before you ask for a street shutdown. We'll line up at 10:00 on Memorial and College, and then parades start at 11, and then Safety Day will follow right around 12.
I'll make motion. Thank you.
I'll second.
Everyone, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And Chief, I assume if there's some council members who wanted to climb, climb up on a fire truck, you let them?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
In our usual spot on Memorial Drive, so you're all more than welcome.
Bring all the candy you can.
I was told I could drive. Oh, see, I, no, I was kidding.
It's on CD.
Nice drive.
I'm not riding it, you're driving, don't scare me.
Everybody on that.
I scared.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
All right. Yes, sir?
I walked in the door, the clock's striking 6:00 p.m., and I didn't get to sign up as a public comment, because the paper wasn't there at 6:00. May I make a public comment, if I keep it brief?
We'd be happy to hear from you, chief.
Thank you. Excuse me. Mayor, that's how I read in the news graphics, thanks for letting me speak to you, I'll try to keep it brief, 'cause it's been already a long evening. I read in the newspaper your comments about your, your plans to restore Uco Inn Park.
Yes, sir.
I read in the newspaper your comments about your, your plans to restore the Uco Inn Park.
Yes, sir.
And you commented to the news graphic that the town would pre-position or pre-stage materials there to be used by volunteers. And first of all, in regard, I intend to be there, it's October the seventh, I believe, and you said that you plan to bring heavy equipment there to move those stones, and I haven't seen the stones, but I can be there with a piece of plywood and some chain to attach to the plywood and make a crude sled, and if we have enough, I, I mean, I don't know how big the stones are, but maybe, but I'm willing to come and, and try to lift the stones out of there manually with a, a number of volunteers rather than, than, than have to use the motorized equipment. Now, that's an offer I make. I haven't seen the stones, maybe totally unrealistic, because I don't know how big they are, but that's an offer that I make. I'll be there. And in the same news graphic article, Mayor Fraser, as I said, you spoke of pre-positioning materials. And I'm dealing still with the code enforcement office, with Attorney Hartley, with Assistant Attorney Golden in regard to ordinance sixteen dash zero zero nine that they say requires mowing of all property in Georgetown so that the vegetation does not exceed ten inches. And I want to tell you that all property in Georgetown, all vacant land is subject to pre-staging or pre-positioning of many materials that people need, and the wind prepositions these materials. For lunch this afternoon, I had wild lettuce. I didn't plant it, the wind brought the seed. The wind prepositioned, pre-staged the lettuce for me to eat. All vacant land in Georgetown can have a dozen varieties of wild edible greens for salad. Pre-staged, pre-positioned. People's shoes, if you would allow people to, to let the trees grow on their property and not mow them down, people could make their own shoes from the trees. And in the wintertime, the grass, if you would allow people to make hay out of the grass, they could put the grass in their shoes to keep their feet warm. And they could stuff their clothes with the grass, they can patch the roof with the grass, and if they get enough grass, they can make the roof. All pre-staged, pre-positioned, with no effort other than just not mowing. And if you get cold in the winter or you want to cook a meal, your fuel, if you will allow the trees to grow, the fuel is pre-positioned, pre-staged by nature on all land in Georgetown if you don't cut down the trees. And in light, I don't know if you've read the paper recently, but if you've read about all these gas lines explosions north of Boston, I say to myself, wood heat is the way to go. And it's, the timber is pre-positioned, pre-staged, to use your term, Mayor Fraser, the, the term you used in regard to the, to the restoration at the park, pre having, pre-staged materials so that the volunteers can do their, their best work. I'm saying if you would allow people to, to retain their vegetation, a, a whole lot of what they consume and what they need in their neighborhood or, or in their home backyards and their home front yards would be pre, pre-positioned, pre-staged, pre-provided by nature with no effort on their part.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. No effort other than to go out there and harvest it and process it.
Next item on the agenda is mayor's comments. Couple of quick things. We, we have been, Chief Swanigan and Chief Ward, we have been, the high school brought us fifty tickets for Friday night's home football game. They want it to be heroes' night. They didn't ask me to distribute these to the council, they asked me to give them to the police, fire, and EMS. So we have a handful of tickets for both your departments, for any police officer or firefighter that would like to attend Friday night's football game. Public Works ought to be in that group. Our ambulance service needs to be in that group, and if y'all could get with your folks and help us spread the word that the high school has invited our employees to do that. Also, if anybody, the last couple of days, if you've been out on Lemons Mill Road, it is a lot smoother. And Eddie, did we get finished up today?
Yes, sir, they finished all this dry cleaning, paving, and.
Good.
I'm not sure about the blue, if that's been told yet, I'll check on that.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment about Eddie. Eddie has, has done an outstanding job stepping in as our new engineer.
He's on it.
I'm very impressed. You bring something to him, it doesn't take forever to get answered for it, and I'd just like to say thank you for the job he's doing for the city.
Thank you, glad to be here.
Eddie's nice.
Yes, he is.
Look, I gotta work with you.
Girl says he's nice, and I say you do good work, so you got it made.
I'll take it, I'll take it. Thank you very much.
Okay. The other thing, we, we for some time have, have had, you know, we had architects evaluating the building and, and giving us some ideas about what needed to be done for the exterior of the building, the interior of the building, and possibly expanding upward in the building. They have finished their evaluation and they are ready to present that to the council. We'll get them here in the next couple or three meetings.
November twelfth is where we're tentatively.
November twelfth is when we're tentatively thinking about that presentation. But I, I want the council to know that, that we've been very straightforward with the architects, and while they're gonna come make their presentation about the building condition and what our options are, so we can understand that going forward, we have told them that we are putting this project on hold for at least six to twelve months. We will take the funds, just like we talked about, Karen, the funds that we had allocated for the architecture work on the building, and just out of necessity, we will allocate those funds to East Main Street Extended.
Good plan.
So our, we will have our long overdue evaluation of City Hall, but the East Main Street Extended project is going to put this on the back burner.
Well, that's very important, too.
So that will be the next step in there. Let's see, and that completes mayor's comments.
Very good.
We're ultimately sure today. Under GMWSS, Chase.
Mayor, council, tonight Georgetown Municipal has first three purchase orders for your consideration. I'll give you a brief description of those. First is to Bluegrass Engineering for eighty-eight thousand, one hundred forty-five dollars. That money, that purchase order is for design of phase two of our collections and operate, our collections and distribution operations center. Phase one, as you've seen, out by the tank is across from our offices, currently under construction. We hope with starting design now, we can roll right into phase two when phase one is complete. Again, that's Bluegrass Engineering that does the, the lion's share of our design, design work. Second is a chemical purchase from Evoqua, Evoqua, that is at our wastewater two, our Toyota plant. That's in the amount of forty-eight thousand, eight hundred seventy dollars, and that will buy us forty thousand pounds of carbon that we use in our carbon exchange. That pass, that cost is passed directly onto Toyota, they graciously pay for that for us. The third purchase order is to Clark Electric for fourteen thousand, three hundred ninety dollars, and that's to rebuild a pump, one of our wastewater pump stations. We went out and got three quotes for that, for new pumps. Their outrageously cost, they're going up and up. We've had great luck lately with rebuilding pumps instead of just buying new ones. Clark Electric is a company we've used, they offer an excellent warranty on the rebuilds. We can usually rebuild a pump three times for the cost of a new pump, so that's the direction we take through your consideration.
You need a made motion for all three of those?
If you would.
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded that we approve the three purchase orders. If there are no questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I got a quick comment, maybe more than a question, but with Bluegrass Engineering, they're gonna be designing a building, I guess? Is that what that's gonna be?
The second half of the building, it'll all end, end be one structure.
Okay.
Will be, have a hard barrier through the middle, as one side is for wastewater operations, one side is for drinking water operations. We have to be very careful that we don't share tools and. Appurtenances for the, the two operation staffs. And it'll be one site and one overall building in the end.
Yeah, and it'll look, it'll mirror the other.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good.
Good. Let's see, Chase, audit.
Next three items, I'm not asking for any action on, just wanted to update council. First of all, is our annual audit. We had RFH consultants in last month for three days examining our financial, financial statement. In your pack, you have the independent auditors report, that's essentially the executive summary of the full audit. And as they presented to our board last week, if you look down on that memo, the opinion paragraph, that is essentially audit speak for you've received a clean audit with no significant findings, which is what we were looking for. If you would like to see the full audit, I have a copy, or if multiple people want it, I can get you a copy. It might be good for that Sunday night if you want to fall asleep to loud music.
He's getting really good up there now, isn't he?
He's getting more comfortable.
Yeah.
That was it on audit. Next item was debt restructuring of a two thousand seven bond. At the mayor's request, we talked to Compass Municipal Advisors on a possible restructuring, restructuring of that debt that was, bond that was used to build a pump station in Forsmain. They reached out to us and have said that the term of that bond, which, which we pay off in twenty twenty-seven, they can reduce the interest rate from four point two-three percent to two point seven-seven percent, giving us a savings of just over a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. No penalties, we're not extending the term of that, that bond, so our, our board approved that. I don't think we, we need any council approval, just Mayor Fraser asked me to look into that, and it is, we appreciate that, Mayor Fraser.
Hey, the folks brought me an analysis of all of our debt, and the water company's debt is reflected on that same analysis, and, you know, frankly, the, the council right before we arrived had restructured the largest portion of our debt, and it can't be touched for ten years. For the city, that only leaves two other small pieces of indebtedness, one of which is around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars left on phase one of the Business Park. And we had promised that as we sold property in Lanes Run Business Park Phase One, we would take those funds and, and put it toward our existing debt. We had a great closing this week with Commonwealth Tools. A portion of what they bought is in phase one and a portion is in phase two, and we're gonna calculate how that lies, and the portion in phase one will be a, a direct reduction in our Business Park debt. Couple of more sales and we'll have that mopped up.
That's good.
So the city really had nothing that could be looked at in terms of refunding or refinancing. The water company did have one that apparently your board thought made sense.
They, they jumped at the chance. We have some major, major infrastructure improvements that I'll be bringing to you in the next few years, so every dollar we can save, especially by doing absolutely nothing other than picking up the phone, we will, we'll certainly take advantage of.
I assume that was the only one worthy of restructuring?
Yes, we looked at all theirs too, but that was the only one that. Had a high enough interest rate and a high enough principal balance to make it worth the.
Good.
Does Parks and Rec have anything like that, Mayor, or would it be through the city or the county?
I think we should ask them and review that, because we, when we find these things, it's pretty good.
I think we stay on top of the cities pretty well.
Nothing, so it just worked out excellent for us.
Good.
Final item, no present formal presentation on it tonight, but it's something that I've begun trying to educate the utility board on. Since starting, I've been looking, but I haven't found anything in terms of long range facilities, master planning for the utility. Our last utilities plan was done in nineteen ninety-nine, and it's a twenty-year plan, so I, I would say that plan was probably accurate for maybe five years at best, and then that is an effort that I think is paramount for our operation to move forward and, and, and be a good utility for the future, so I'm gonna be looking not only ways on how we develop that long-term planning effort, but how we finance it, whether we can, I, I wish we could start it yesterday. There's obviously not an item in our current budget, but if there's other items, we're gonna look very strongly at pushing if, if we can get the facilities master plan started. If not, it'll definitely be something that we look at in next year's budget. It's, it's the roadmap for how we do, we will do capital projects and making sure that we are financially have our rates where they need to be to pay for those improvements that we will have to have in the next twenty years, so. You can look for me to, to bring you more information as we develop that effort internally and, and what we need to do as far as consultants to bring in to help us with that effort.
Chase has worked with us very, in a very collaborative way, and we think this point of transition is an ideal time to take another long look down the road with Chase's tenure beginning. I think that's probably a pretty smart thing for us to be doing.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
And just as Chase is leaving the podium, we do, this collaborative nature has worked well, and I was just looking at the calendar, I think tomorrow, is tomorrow when we meet Chase? We started scheduling quarterly meetings with the chair of the water board, Chase, and myself.
That's good.
So that we have a scheduled time to sit down and make sure that we talk about ongoing issues and things of that nature, so. That's working well. Item eight on your agenda is something that I think is gonna make the council very happy, something we've been working on for a while.
Sorry. Go ahead. I was in the wrong place.
You're in the wrong place, so catch up with me here. Strand Associates has been, been helping us with our look at water, South Water Street, about our parking evaluation, our traffic evaluations, all of the information that the council's been waiting to hear on what we might, what improvements we might make to South Water Street. And after this presentation, if you'll look down one more, one more line item, we will ask you at the end of this presentation to consider making South Water Street one-way from Broadway to Clinton. We'll go through lots of interesting data, but the, the number to me that resonates and just leaps off the page is if we make it one-way and do parallel parking on both sides, we can go from twenty-four parking spots on South Water Street to forty-four parking spots. We rarely have chances to pick up twenty parking spots, and this is a golden opportunity tonight, once we understand the recommendation, at the cost of some paint.
Pretty low cost.
Yeah, and public education and awareness. So with that said, I'll, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, good evening, my name's Chase Wright, I'm an engineer with Strand Associates. Strand's been working with the city for a number of years, a lot of the stormwater concerns, we've been working with the engineering department on those, and personally, I've been working for Strand for ten years. I do mostly transportation projects throughout central Kentucky, did a lot of the downtown work in downtown Lexington for the World Equestrian Games, South, South Lime, some legacy trail, done a number of projects. So that's kind of my focus areas in the transportation, transportation area. So as far as work with Georgetown, I helped with the City Hall parking lot project several years ago, and I also helped, pretty recently, the city was awarded one point seven million in federal grants on two projects, and the mayor and I went and met with the transportation cabinet helping get those grants, and so it was nice to get to work collaboratively with your staff and involve mayor to get those projects for the city, so those are very important projects. So the Water Street project, we were originally selected when the city worked with, with the University of Cincinnati on this grander project in all of downtown. The city procure an engineer, we were selected. City procurer and engineer, we were selected, and I'm the project manager for that, because it was a bigger city state project. When we sat down with Mayor and Andrew, you all have some immediate needs. You know, we talked about these large capital improvements, they take time. Well, you have an immediate parking need along the corridor, so they asked us, let's focus this initial analysis on the traffic and parking, and what can be done in the short term to really help the businesses along the corridor. So, the initial phase was to address these parking concerns, and we evaluated parking availability along the corridor, and then provides possible solutions to help improve the parking inventory. And here's a map looking from West Main Street, or a picture looking south, and there's parking today along the east side, two directions with no parking signs along the west. So, the parking and traffic evaluation scope, the first step was meeting with business owners, and the city contacted business owners along the corridor, and we ended up meeting with six different groups or individuals to hear what their concerns were along the corridor. And they all expressed a need for parking. And they also, we wanted to know how they would feel if it went one-way, and none of them were opposed to converting to one-way. In fact, most of them, you know, saw that, how that could benefit, and going southbound was kind of their preference, because there's some safety concerns of West Main Street, just with the geometry and trying to turn out, it's a really wide intersection. So then, we wanted to hear, wanted to actually confirm if what we heard was what the case was. So, we went up five different times, and this is just schematic maps of the different parking areas. We counted on-street parking, parking lots nearby to kind of see what the demand is in the Friday evening, Saturday evening, and different times during the day. And what we found is what they said, there's a lot of people parked on Water Street and surrounding parking lots. And so, the most we counted was 26, and so that kind of really gets jammed in along that corridor, so it kind of fit really tight. And then we wanted to do a traffic analysis. If you did convert this project to one-way, what would it do? Well, Water Street doesn't really have a high volume, and so operationally, it operates at acceptable and one-way condition. But we need to confirm that before you make a decision about how the traffic flow would operate. And then we wanted to develop possible solutions, and one of the big things, it may make sense from a traffic perspective, and it may make sense from a parking perspective, but how's it affect emergency services, waste management collection? And we got to meet with police, fire, and Public Works, and they helped look at the table, and actually went out and took a look at how a fire truck would serve these buildings if there was a need, if this was one-way, because it is going to get tighter, you know. And so, we have an approach that was acceptable to really all the groups, and so it's very collaborative effort from your staff to look at what we're proposing here. So, this is, it's going to be kind of hard to see, but this is an on-street parking concept. You have West Main Street, yeah, on the right on both sides, and then today it's two-way. So, the first step is, this would be going southbound conversion, and one of the big things was more of the stakeholders thought it's southbound, but also just the public safety aspect with, if you're trying to make a turn on West Main Street, that safety aspect. And I think you all will be looking at that as part of one of your grants. What you can do with some bump outs, those would be really good to help people cross more effectively and really get out there, so that's a separate project. So then, you know, when they're collecting with waste management collection, a lot of that happens really early in the morning. And so, if you do parallel parking on both sides, on the west side, you can get 24 spaces additional, but you could also do them time of day, so we restrict it, and early in the morning, so the waste collection vehicles have more room to operate, where they can get in and out, and you also don't have a really big parking need at 6:00 in the morning or 7:00. That's not your peak times, so you can allocate that space better by just having some time-of-day restrictions.
On the whole street, or just on a portion?
Just on the west side. So, you'd leave just like it is today with parking on the east.
Yeah.
And the other one, you just say, you know, whatever day or two days of collection, you just have a sign or ordinance maybe that just restricts that time of day parking. And that, we ended up, it's kind of hard to see on this map, and I'd be happy to meet that.
No, no, it's all right. I'm just wondering, because the homes are kind of on the east side of the street, right?
Yeah.
Which is where the trash containers are probably going to be anyway. So, I'm just wondering, do we really need to restrict the west side of the street?
Well, it's for their turning vehicles, and as they get moving, it gets tight. So, the corridor itself, it varies in width. Down by local feet, it gets, it would get as small as 11 and 1/2 feet, you know, when you're operating those big, heavy trucks.
Yeah. You're already outside of the automated truck.
Yeah, so they're operating by hand.
You can't use the automated truck on that street anyway, so.
Okay.
Wow.
But, you know, it's, you know, that's something you could look at, after it gets out, you need to make those restrictions. If you don't think you need to make them
You're not proposing them right from the start, then?
It's based on their feedback, that's what was discussed, is having those time-of-day restrictions, but you don't have that, you don't have that demand, you know, if they can say it's on Wednesday morning, 6:00 in the morning, you know, because vehicles shouldn't
I understand. I was just, I'm just throwing this out, just what we're talking about, it just, I'm thinking if the restaurants were kind of busy at night, and somebody came home from work, they wanted to park on the other side of the street just because their spots were taken, then they didn't get up
You could just watch it operationally, you know, have it for a couple of test runs. This is kind of a test project, really, because you're implementing stuff with marking, and you're able to do it at low cost. You could, if you, if that is a concern, you could, really, it's down your local feet is the main, the rest of it gets wider, as much as 15 feet in lane width, so it's much more comfortable. And that may be something you should get back to Public Works and see what they're comfortable with. I mean, obviously, they need room to operate their facility, but.
David, when you can, this is a good map, but you really need it closer. What they've worked with Chief Ward on is making sure that fire trucks have a radius and can get close enough
That makes sense.
To the building that they need to be close to. So, we actually let them horse trade out a couple of parking spots
Okay.
To get the fire coverage that we needed. So, we think we're threading the needle on what we can achieve and still maintain public safety.
Yeah, I'm not being critical, I promise, I'm just
Yeah, just want you to know that we, some of those details have been looked at,
Okay.
But since it's paint, it's pretty easy to check.
So, it could be evaluated, but making sure they have adequate access, you don't, you know, you don't want to get too restricted for them.
Sure.
So, the east side, it would be restricted a little bit, 22 spaces. Again, the most we counted was 26, so it's not really that much, and some of those were for gaps, to have openings near some of the businesses for better fire protection and just kind of general gaps along the corridor. So, it's really, when you mark spaces, sometimes you, you know, you may, you know, may not be able to fit as many as you could have before, but it also better delineates those spaces and gives gaps where you need gaps. And you could also, you know, if you have business needs along the corridor for short-term parking, you could take a line out and make a loading zone for a small period of time where they could have deliveries come in, you know, if a business had that need, you could take two parking spaces and make one loading zone, or however large a vehicle they needed. So, it could be something that kind of adapts as your corridor, because this corridor's changing, and as the corridor changes, your needs are going to change. And, you know, if you do a capital project with concrete sidewalks, that gets a lot of money, and it's very fixed, where this is marking, it kind of gives you that flexibility for handling. It doesn't fix a lot of it, this is really old infrastructure through here, but if it can get a start, you know, and then you start, that's how, you just got to get moving and get momentum, and there's a lot of really positives that are happening on this corridor.
There's also, when you look at this example closely, it adds some parking spots beside some buildings where that space is currently being used to work on vehicles. And we've been trying to
Yeah.
Reduce that from happening. We think creating parking spots there, which are obviously not places to work on vehicles at a garage next door, we can better control some problem areas.
Yeah.
And then, so basically, just kind of in summary, is total parking is 46 versus 26, as the mayor said, it'd be an increase of 20, just along the street. So, there's a lot of positives that can be done on Water Street itself.
And you said that there have been meetings with homeowners and the business?
So, the city sent out letters, and it got six different groups. Some of them, I met with one resident, you know, because there's a couple of residents on there, and, you know, they have a different perspective than the commercial interest, but they had a parking concern, you know. I believe the gentleman I met with, it's maybe a rental his house, and it's not currently occupied, his brother maybe lives in the adjacent one, but he said one of the things is he comes, he can never get a parking spot in front of his house. And so, more parking will, it may not solve that issue because you can't dedicate.
Better chance.
But, yes, it definitely helps him on those trips. Met with some of the local businesses, and even met across the way with the church, you know, they have a different set, really on North Water, they have a different set of issues than necessarily on South Water, but, you know, as this redevelops, it'll help all of them. Any questions before I get off this slide? I have it up, and I'd be happy to discuss them. So, there's also some off-street parking improvements that could be done, and there is some public parking areas, and one of the things that the city's already, so parking lot S, highlighted there, is you're all, one of your all's facilities at Clinton and Water, and the city's already working, one of the things we noticed is that parking lot's full in the evening for people, patrons of the businesses, but there is a number of government vehicles that were also parked there because it is a place of business. But after hours, is there another place that could be parked that wouldn't take close parking spaces next to the buildings? They could maybe move across the street or somewhere where people coming to the restaurant would have more close spaces to park. And so, I think the city, I don't know what the current status is, but they're looking at ways to take the government vehicles into another location to help increase that parking inventory more.
With building electrical and code enforcement, there's as many as nine or 10 vehicles, and we recognize now that if we move them off of the old Water Company building lot, it frees up a lot of public parking there. So, we can move them across to the KU lot, that we're trying to get more cooperation from KU. We need a multifaceted strategy here to meet this need.
And
But that's one thing.
And so, this is, I believe, the lot right now that you all are moving them to, it's gravel today, and you are seeing some vehicles parked there, but it's odd-shaped, and it's gravel, and there's no signs, so can you park there, can you not? You know, if you have more parking need after you do some of these improvements, you could look at formalizing an agreement with Kentucky Utilities, maybe paving it, striping it, so you could be more efficient. That's if you have, you know, it's kind of, again, a phased approach, but that may be a place that provides opportunities. And then people do park in, I guess, the substation KU parking lot today, and some of that is just, you know, the businesses have a sign that says, hey, you can park there, where you know you can park there, there may be a nice way to formalize an agreement, again, if there's a need. You know, by almost doubling the inventory, you're already making good efforts, but, you know, as the corridor continues to redevelop, you may have to continue to look at these kind of incremental steps to help increase the parking inventory along the way. So, the next steps, if you all whip through with the motion to convert, is you want to conduct some follow-up meetings with those stakeholders, let them know that they were heard, and moving forward. Also, maybe if it's a lot of these off-street parking solutions, develop some parking maps and give those to the businesses, and let them distribute them to their customers as they come, to let them know, hey, you can park here, this is going to be an acceptable spot. Public outreach through the newspaper website, if there was a community event, maybe you could even host a community event along the corridor, as things start going with food trucks, or, you know, just food from the local vendors along the way, just to get people excited, because, I believe you said it was, you know, want to be the coolest place in Georgetown, or in central Kentucky, maybe?
Central Kentucky.
Yes, and it is really neat, the corridor itself, you have a really nice assets along the way with aging infrastructure, but there is something really neat about that corridor. How can you get people excited when something's happened organically versus trying to force a project into an area, let the project kind of adapt over time? So, implementation, I actually spoke with the district office this morning, and they've had some transition in their permit group, but we just kind of over the phone, didn't think it'd be a huge deal to convert this, but if you want to do it, you're probably going, you're going to want to put some one-way signs up on state right of way, so just having a follow-up meeting with the district office just to confirm. Field confirmation of the concept marking plan, a lot of this with engineering's group, we went out and measured a couple of the widths along the corridor, but just kind of field spotting, some of these are some utility poles, so some of these spaces, you know, your inventory number may change slightly, but you want to make sure that you put it where it is in the field and kind of mark the spaces off, so a little bit of adaptation of that. And then just implement the signage and striping on the corridor. And again, you may have a unit price contract with the marking company, I don't know if you all do or not, but, you know, there could be a way, or even with city forces if you all have, so.
We've talked about putting sign, maybe one of the electronic signs there, and giving people
[coughing]
As of X date, one-way will begin.
Yeah, I mean, you're going to have some of the people use it as a cut-through today, and they're going to find a different way to go, you know, they're, I mean, it's not that many cars, most of them probably are using it as a cut-through or coming from the south and trying to find parking spaces along Main Street in those diagonal spots. You're probably, looking at the circulation, that's probably coming. You have a couple of roads up if that's where they're coming from, but it's a small number, and the people that are using it as a cut-through, you know, that's not that, if you want to make businesses, you know, have an inviting environment, you don't want people cutting through, because usually they're driving faster, you know, so, you know, it's, cut-through traffic's not necessarily as fast. That's really where you're, where you may impact someone, but it's, I think we count under 60 vehicles an hour during the peak periods, and again, it was during summer, but we inflated the numbers by 20%. I mean, they're very, it's very small, the traffic volumes along the corridor. And I've got the math back, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
We're just completely puzzled by the fact that we now have two Chases in the room, and we're
We graduated together.
We're not used to having one, we got two Chases in the room. And they're both engineers.
I would ask who's the smartest, but you both probably
I'll give it.
You admitted it.
Oh, both of them said the other one.
Oh.
Aw, two humble people, that's nice.
Well, you feel very good now, don't you, you admitted it.
He was just beating up.
Okay.
That's pretty incredible, really.
It is.
It's kind of sitting there looking at us all this time, that's pretty cool.
Sometimes the simplest of, like, sometimes, you know, especially as engineers, you can get in and you can try to overcomplicate things.
Well, we brought it up to you about a year or so ago about changing that, and it took this long, but it's working out.
Well, and now we, instead of thinking it works, we can know.
It will work, it will work.
That's really awesome.
And we can do that.
Credit to folks, you know, a lot of the time when you're talking about modifying, you need to get emergency services and Public Works and people that are going to be utilized here in the facility, because at the end of the day, it can make sense from an engineering standpoint, but you've got to make sure you aren't adversely impacting something. So, having their buy-in was huge and helping.
Specifically, when you come down college, and if you need to fight a fire at local feet, we've got to get that fire truck right up on that corner of the building.
Yeah.
So, that's where we really had to toy with radius and parking spots. So, this has been a science.
And very collaborative.
Smoke is right there.
So, the other thing that's pretty exciting about this is these efforts will complement what we're trying to do with the TAP grant
Right.
And improvements to the bi-duct
Yeah.
And your ability to cross West Main Street safely, all ties into these Water Street improvements, so.
I think, I mean, you're immediately making major traffic safety improvements by taking
Not coming out.
Left and right turns onto Main Street
Yeah.
Away.
Yeah.
Yeah, there could be a couple, a couple of things. If you do the bump outs on West Main Street, one of the things we noticed, working through the grant application, there's a fire hydrant at the corner, but if you did a curb bump out, you may be able to push that fire hydrant over and get a couple more spots of diagonal parking. You know, there's a number of things that can be done kind of collaboratively, but it needs to make sense from fire protection and water service if you do move.
Could you go back to a few slides?
Yeah.
To where you were looking at that right there. Mayor, just as we talked about how much Eddie's already helped us out since I've been here, I will offer, if you're looking for a place to park nine or 10 government vehicles at night, the Water Company owns a pretty big parking lot just across the street there. Open to discussion if
If it's not too far to ask people to walk after they park their truck.
No.
Just keep in mind that we're a 24/7 operation, so the drive would have to be clear, but there's plenty of parking at night and that.
How many people park in front during the day? You have quite a few, so they can fit maybe all of those vehicles in the front. We looked at that, so that's a good, that's a good concept.
And before long, Chase is going to be through with his new distribution building, and then we get to talk about what we're going to do with the old distribution building.
Wow.
Well, we've, I'm sure Chase has got plans, but we've got plans too. We need a satellite Public Works.
Is that
Little spot in Georgetown.
That'd be pretty cool, Mayor.
Yes, it would.
Because we have under contract, striping.
Does Central Seal work?
Well, it's through Hamilton &amp; Hinkle.
Okay.
But they sub that through another group.
One of the major, yeah, so basically on this layout Yeah, so basically on this layout, we have located typically on urban parking spaces, the exterior can be 20 feet. Interior parking spaces are a little bit bigger because it's a little bit harder to maneuver. So these are, these are 22 and that's kind of the minimum there. So we have those noted. They could take, they could take this and kind of tape off. I would recommend that fire, a lot of this was in the turning radius. You know, maybe you could kind of field spot a couple and then go out with some cones and make sure all those radii look good and acceptable. And, but yes, I think you could take this plan. Again, it's just dimensionally and really, really see where those gaps are. It is the scale, but it was done from an old aerial, so it's, but yes, it's a good working start.
Let's do the municipal order.
Yes, sir. Shall we?
Oh, you want to read?
Or we can just...
We have motion, yeah.
Let's just motion it.
So the only item of note on the MO is that we choose to make it effective November 1, to give ourselves a month for the public education, the signs, the marking.
I'll second his motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. Any questions for Chase?
Good job.
Thank you all for your time.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed?
It's exciting.
Yes, it is. Thank you, Chase.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see. So we've already done 9A. And let's see, under City Attorney, Item B, a municipal order approving a contract with Dixie Restoration for the Ward Hall project. You are aware, we've been working for over a year to try and help...
Trying to spend $100,000.
To try and help Ward Hall spend their money.
It's been six.
Six years.
The Cardone Project family got all that grant spent. And now we're desperately working with Ward Hall. This will do gutter restoration and repair. It is not for the full amount of the grant, but we, it has a, depending on found conditions, they may have to spend more money once they get in there. And if they have money left over, they can add unit price and add more linear feet. So...
You need a motion?
I need a motion, please. Thank you.
I'll second.
And seconded, thank you. If there are no questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Item C is first reading of an amendment to the animal ordinance sponsored by Ms. Tackett.
May I speak on that? I just want to say that not only did what Mr. Witt came up, he called me and talked to me about it, but I also have a friend who had the same problem in Cherry Blossom. She was walking her dog. She's been attacked twice by two other animals. That the dogs were just in the yard and the owners thought that it would be okay and it wasn't. I mean, it punctured her knee and everything. It was, it was pretty intense. And so then when Mr. Witt called me and told me about it, it's like, you know, some dogs are not going to do at your command. But now I will say, my neighbor, I walked my dogs the other day and I had my dogs on leashes, but they had the protective fence. They didn't come out at all. You know, I wasn't afraid because I've seen them out there before. So I do absolutely 100% think that when people are out there walking their dogs, that they need to have control of them.
Thank you.
And to pick up waste.
And this ordinance makes one tiny change. As Mr. Webb indicated, our ordinance currently says you can have your dog on a leash or under your control. This simply eliminates under your control.
It has to be by physical control.
It has to be physical control. And Connie, our ordinance already has a pooper-scooper portion to it.
People follow on it now. They just need to be called on it.
They need to be called on it.
What's the enforcement, what's the enforcement behind this? That's the question. That's always been the question. With any dog ordinance that we find, is what's, how's the enforcement? Because if it's a civil problem, like what you're talking about, that the dog came out of the yard and the person was hurt or their dog or whatever was hurt, that's a civil problem at that point in time, if I'm not, not wrong. But how do you enforce, how do you enforce this is the question.
Yeah, that's a tougher one. And we, you know, we've gone back and forth a couple of times on whether animal stuff is criminal or civil. And we landed last time on it being civil, under code enforcement. So basically you get a citation.
It kind of is. But there again, this person that gives the citation has to be there at the time that the dog is unruly or out of control or off its leash or whatever the situation is.
Correct.
So, so for the neighbor, that's the person that has the dog that's never on the leash or whatever, running around, they've just got to call animal control to come cite.
Or code enforcement?
Or code enforcement. Either one. And you video it.
You could video or take a picture.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and you know, for most of our ordinances, particularly smaller offense ordinances, enforcement's always the issue. But what I do think it gives us is in situations where the problem is really acute or people are over the top, it gives us some tool to use where we don't have one today. So we just, we just want more tools to use.
I did have a question on the C part of it, about the female dogs and cats in heat being confined. How do, how would people do that? I mean, is that just on the honor system or, I guess it was kind of like what Karen was saying about that.
You can't enforce that either. You don't enforce cats now. Cats are in the neighborhood. We restrain dogs because if they do some, usually it's a little more aggressive. But we don't put cats on leash and...
It's just holdover language from decades old. We certainly can strike it, but I'll be honest with you. I mean, I don't even, I know why you have that kind of provision, but I don't think anyone has ever been cited for such a thing.
Yeah, I think it'd be kind of hard to.
There again, there again, if your dog gets out and comes over to your dog and there's puppies involved, it still can be a civil problem there too. You can sue for that as well.
We've actually had puppies that way.
Uh-huh, it's not uncommon.
Mayor, I think we need to co-order.
We need to have.
Gone totally down south.
It's gone to the dogs already.
I asked the clerk to read the ordinance, but I'm reading.
Mayor, before we go too far.
An ordinance amending Chapter 3 of the Georgetown Code of Ordinances related to animals. Summary, 1. Amend Section 3-25 of the Code of Ordinances which sets forth the requirements for confinement and control of animals. Provides that when outside of the owner's or handler's premises, owners shall maintain control of dogs via use of a leash, portable pet carrier or other humane physical restraint. Provides that dogs running within a public dog park under owner's supervision are deemed in compliance with the ordinance. 2. Provides repeal of inconsistent ordinances, cerebility of provisions in an effective date upon passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, 100 North Court Street, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324, or at www georgetown ky.gov. Introduced in public for the first time September 24, 2018.
Thank you. That will constitute first reading of the ordinance. We'll have second reading and a roll call vote in two weeks.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's see, Item 10 on your agenda under dispatch is a municipal...
We got to go to D.
We got to go to D.
9D.
That's right. We should do the tax ordinance.
Probably.
Because we had a hearing.
Jumping ahead.
Yeah, jumping ahead. Next item on your agenda is second reading of the property tax ordinance. Thank you.
An ordinance providing for and making the real property, personal property, motor vehicle and watercraft tax levy for city purposes for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018 and ending June 30, 2019 inclusive. Whereas the City Council for the City of Georgetown, Kentucky is required by KRS 92.280 to enact a ordinance each year, a tax levy on all real property, personal property, motor vehicles and watercraft. Now therefore being ordained by the City Council for the City of Georgetown, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, that the following tax levy is hereby made for city purposes for the City of Georgetown, Kentucky for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018 and ending June 30, 2019 inclusive to it. For the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018 and ending June 30, 2019 inclusive, there is hereby made a tax levy of 6.5 cents on each $100 of assessed real property, 6.5 cents on each $100 of assessed personal property, and 16.8 cents on each $100 of assessed motor vehicles and watercraft, which tax proceeds shall be designated to the general fund for the general operation of city government. Section 2, all matters related to the payment of the taxes imposed on motor vehicles and watercraft hereunder shall be in accordance with KRS Chapter 134-800. Section 3, that upon all taxes for real property and personal property levied herein with which are unpaid on January 1, 2019, there shall begin to accrue, attach and be added from said date a flat penalty of 15% onto the total amount of said taxes and due and payable through January 31, 2019. After which the flat penalty shall be 20%. Additionally, tax bills not paid before March 1, 2019 shall have added to them interest at the rate of 1% per month or fraction of a month until said taxes are paid. The penalty interest as provided herein shall be added to said unpaid taxes and collected by the City Finance Director and/or the City Clerk. Should the real or personal property tax herein become delinquent, the City Financial Officer, the City Clerk and/or the City Attorney are authorized to file suit to collect all delinquent taxes plus court costs and expenses, including a reasonable attorney fee incurred by reason of the delinquency. Section 4, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause or phrase of this ordinance is held unconstitutional or otherwise invalid, such infirmity shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section 5, all ordinance or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section 6, the ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law. Publicly introduced and referred the first time August 13, 2018. Publicly read the second time September 24, 2018.
Motion, Mayor.
Thank you. Second.
Keep this party going.
Any questions? If not, we'll call the roll.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mrs. Tinglestein?
Yes.
Mr. Lesby?
Yes.
Mrs. Singer-Erdley?
Yes.
Mrs. Butcher-Cromway?
Yes.
Mr. Bradley?
Yes. Thank you. Carries. Now I can go to Item 10 on your agenda, municipal order approving contracts for phones. What we're doing here, the, with our new radio system, the phones for the 911 center were not a part of that radio bid. And we're at, we're nearing end of life with the 911 telephone system. And we also need a phone system that allows our emergency operations center to work as well. That added, that was the extra step that was really causing some indigestion. We think we've found that the best solution is this cloud-based system. Robert, I'll let you explain the technical parts of this.
Okay. As part of the radio project, the dispatch center has to move operations to the EMA headquarters that's located at the county fire station. They're going to have to physically be out of that building for probably two months, two and a half months. Our existing phone system would either have to be moved to that location and then moved back to the 911 center, or we would have to go with some other solution. And speaking to AT&amp;T and also the dispatchers, our existing phone system is outdated, severely outdated. And...
It's unsupported, right?
What's that?
It's beyond outdated.
Yeah, absolutely. They'll still support the lines, but as far as getting pieces and parts for that, we'll have to go back to doing it before going off the eBay and places, getting pieces for it.
Been done that road.
Yeah, we've done it before. But we're paying right now jointly with the county, right about $9,300 a month for that system. That includes the lines and the actual phone hardware. So the solution that we're moving to is hosted, which requires less hardware and it lowers the cost to...
What'd you say, 50?
Yeah, right, right.
52.96.
Yeah, 52.96. So the savings will be there over time to more than make up the cost of what we're putting out. The main cost is obviously the initial purchase, which is around $247,000. They have tried several years to get a grant to cover that. I think they use CSET money. Have you heard that term before? It's part of the 911 tax money. They have a grant each year that they offer out and we've just been unsuccessful to get a word of the grant. But the current system is outdated. It will have to be replaced. Will we do it as part of this or in the very near future it will have to be replaced?
This 247, is that going to be divided with the county?
It's a 50/50 purchase between us and the county.
Monthly cost and the capital cost will be shared with the county government.
And the new phone system will allow us to upgrade to next-gen 911, which is text to 911 and other features that other counties are implementing.
Chief, it pays for itself though in about five years, doesn't it?
It does. There's three items on the bill that remain constant. One remains constant and the others vary. And those are 911 tariff fees. So the rest of that is safe.
Where are we getting that money? Where are we going to get that money?
It's a leap year.
Where are we going to get our part? Is it part of our bid or is this extra?
It's in the budget.
It's in the budget? Motion.
We talked about it being part of contingency.
Yes.
It's not technically part of the contract, but contingency should cover it.
There's funds built into the radio system. Contingency might have a cover.
I'll make a second, Mayor. I like things that pay for themselves fairly quickly.
Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. If there are no further questions for the chief, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Uh, let's see. Mr. Hightower, under City Engineer, we have a municipal order approving a contract with Hamilton &amp; Henkel for Clay Avenue repairs. Every council member has walked and talked to residents of Clay Avenue. And Clay Avenue needs resurfacing, but it has so many problems with drainage and those high sidewalks on one side.
Broken sidewalks.
We've approached that very carefully so we don't make a problem worse in trying to fix it. But Eddie studied it for some time and worked with Hamilton &amp; Henkel and we have a bid for your consideration tonight.
Right, right.
If you tell them what you're doing there.
And what we're doing is some sidewalk and curbing gutter improvements to help with the drainage on the street. So the total amount that we're requesting is $23,750 for the sidewalk and curbing gutter. And what it'll look like, when you go down through there, you can see on the right where the sidewalk and the curb are together, it'll mirror that on the other side. So it won't be the whole entire way. It'll be about half, about the midpoint to keep that water from draining onto that one property.
Eddie and I talked today about the young lady that's blind and her needs. And Eddie's been up there and has met the neighbor who is very vocal. I think Millie may have a sign in that yard. So we have talked to, Eddie has been up there and we know this is a pretty sensitive project for the people that live on Clay Avenue. But we think, we think finally this is going to fix some things up there.
Well, Quinn, they told me they were blocking it off the blacktop and I called Eddie. I said, Eddie, you need to come and look at this for you. He was tempted about the blacktop and see what we need on sidewalks. And he was, he was up there the next day. And I think you're going to take care of the sidewalk in front of Debbie Calvert where it's busted. That one big sidewalk that's broke right in there. Yeah, so I'll make motion to approve. I think it's something well needed.
Second, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And for funding purposes, this is all done through our MAAP funds, so.
Worked out good.
So that works well. Good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Also, Mr. Hightower has a municipal order approving a contract with Integrated Engineering for our East Main Street project. We know we're on such a tight timeline that what I want to disclose to the council is rather than go through a separate RFQ process and ask for qualifications of firms and then make a selection and negotiate with that company, we already had Integrated do the original review. We saw no sense in changing horses in the middle of the stream. So I made an executive decision to not do that RFQ stage. But we did negotiate directly with Integrated and we have that contract for you tonight so that we can move forward with design.
Motion, Mayor. Motion, Mayor.
Thank you. Motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded. If there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Then we have a council's favorite thing, municipal order approving a change order for lanes run business park. The nature of this change order is, we found soft soil right where we need to build the road. And you can't build roads on soft soil, and those are found conditions that we simply, we simply did not know about. So that is a change order, Eddie, and the amount of $79,266. And we will still have a remaining contingency budget.
Yeah, that's the first part of it. The second part is the change in the pipe from, to the elliptical-shaped pipe. That's $32,800, $639.30.
Okay, two, two separate change orders. One for deleterious materials.
Say that again.
Deleterious materials.
Have yours.
Yeah, it, we, it needs to be deleted. This is what we're going to do with that soil, and then it has to be, for a road bid, it has to be an engineered fill, and that's what this cost is.
So we still have a contingency of $388,000, and the total change order is gonna be $111,905?
Yes, ma'am. They, they, they put $500,000 in contingency.
For unknowns?
Under the project budget.
Motion, Mayor.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
And seconded. If there are no questions for Eddie, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you all.
Item 13, excuse me, 12 on your agenda, you'll recall that we approved in the budget of painting some fire bays for the fire department.
Yep.
And I believe we have that bid back, chief, is that right?
We do, yes.
Mayor, council, we just asked for your all's approval. I think the amount was $17,400, and that's Station 2 and Station 3.
Is that all materials and labor?
Labor.
Just labor, or?
I'm sorry.
Is it material and labor?
Material labor, yes, yeah. We pretty much take care of the inside as far as the living quarters go, but when it comes to that bay, you know, it needs to be sprayed, and it's a lot more involved.
Again, this is a situation where we only got one bid. I mean, how comfortable are you with this pricing?
Uh, we're, we're pretty comfortable with it. Before we even, you know, did the budget, one of our technicians that oversees our building maintenance, he went out and got a couple quotes, and they were quoting about $8,500 per station. And actually, the ones that give us a quote back before that didn't even bid on it. The company that bid on it had not even gave us quotes.
This is close to what we budgeted, correct?
Yes. We had budgeted $17,000. I'd take the other 400 out of my building maintenance account.
Motion, Mayor. Say.
Any other questions for the chief?
And Eddie helped us actually put the bid together, and all as far as when we bid it out and everything. Helped us a bunch.
Thanks, chief.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thanks, Eddie.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Eddie.
Thank you, chief. Let's see, and Chief Swanigan, Police Department has a municipal order approving items for surplus. And you have that...
Kind of exercise equipment you got, I might wanna have, put, buy something to hang my clothes on.
Public Surplus.com.
Gotcha. I can bid it.
That's, I think there's some exercise equipment. I don't have the exact...
Semen mixture, jewelry.
We got it.
Jewelry.
Yeah, this is a property that was, found property that's not been claimed.
We're gonna make a motion for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
And seconded. If there are no questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And you'll, you'll notice, boy, the Revenue Commission kinda wrung the value out of their 1997 Toyota Camry.
Old one.
Oh, man.
I think we should retire that one now. Okay, well, that gets us all the way down to the bottom of the list. Millie, can we start with you?
Yes, sir. On the, there's a couple of things I wanted to say, that's okay. On lowering the property tax from the 6.5 to 6.3, I just wanted to say how happy I am that we could do that for the citizens of Georgetown. And I also wanted to say, as I've been out walking and talking to people, do it in the morning, do it noon, do it in the early evening, I've, I've just realized, and I know we've talked about this a lot, Mark, especially you and I, about how dark it is in the early evening. And I know we've talked about street lights and how important they are, and we've talked about, on the harsh, harsh trains, how you pronounce it. And I just wanna see there be some type of a situation from here forward that we try to put some additional lighting and phases or something throughout. I know we're talking about it, and we're working on it and getting prices, and I know it's terribly expensive to do, but just for safety reasons, I think we need some additional lighting, you know, for the, the cars that are driving down the street and the people that are trying to walk. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Anything else? Holly?
I'm just glad to see the water street situation getting fixed, 'cause I know it's, it's been hanging out there for a long time, and as the street is busier, so I'm probably, I'm sorry, I'm just glad to see it being fixed.
Yeah, we, we've had some upset business owners and merchants down there, and...
Bet their money.
It, it, it costs them money, and, and I'm, I'm with you, I'm glad that we can take this step tonight. Thank you.
No, sir.
David?
Just wanna thank you for the $175,000 you just saved the citizens of Georgetown on the refa, right? Not even a refa, modification or whatever it was, it's a good deal. Like things like that.
Thank you very much. Karen?
Right, no, I have a question afterwards, but not during.
I'm gonna help you out now. I know you're getting a little...
The blue bows, the blue bows. I'm going to challenge the council members and all the elected officials of Georgetown to get your blue bow, and the proceeds for that will go to Officer Morales, it's actually gonna go to Georgetown Citizens Police Academy, and then they're gonna do something for Deputy Morales. So everybody needs a blue bow for their house, they need a blue bow for their businesses, for everybody that has businesses on the council.
Already done, too.
So, yeah, some of you all have, the rest of you all need to step up.
I'll take one, Karen. Come see ya.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just wanna say, I know that this weekend and probably the next couple of days, the water is just gonna be horrific, and I know that you're being very open-minded and sincere to people calling and stuff. I know it's just a big thing that we've really had to deal with for a long time. And I do wanna say that Sunday, and I got a text from Derby Estates.
Yep.
And it was about 11:25 when I got the text that it was, you know, rolling, the water was rolling, and of course, they blamed it on the state again. And I said, well, I, I'm not, I can't come now, but I will drive out there. But by the time I got out there, it was 10 minutes till 1:00. So within an hour and a half, that water was gone. What we had done...
Worked.
Looked like it worked for the amount of water that was coming down, 'cause I took pictures of it off of Tim Tam. But as you go back out, you know, of course, it was, the water was raging underneath of the bridge and stuff like that, and over here where the detention, retention basin was, that was full. But even coming out of Derby and coming down 25 South, the water was rushing down 25 on the side of the road, and, and the creek was, was rising, and by the time I got to a, well, actually, it was Jackson, I had to turn because Public Works was already there at 10 after 1:00, blocking the road off because the water was horribly deep. And I do hope that we can do something to help these ladies, and thank you for doing that. And thanks for the money that you saved us, and it's just been a great day. Thanks.
Thank you.
That's all I got. Thank you for letting me share.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Chuck.
No, don't have anything.
All right.
Mayor, real quick before you hit the go.
And I forgot a couple of mayor's comments.
I did get a call out there from Derby, and one of the ladies was, was calling about the swag that she had grabbed with her, I guess it's where the water runs, that they've taken all that grab out, so it's worsened that out a little bit. Maybe get, get them to go out there and look at that.
If you get us the address, we'll be glad to...
It's Tim Tam. It's the second house on the right.